A special committee meeting will now come to order. I'd like to open up with a statement so people can understand, especially those various departments who've been asked to come forth and give their presentations on their IT structure and needs. At the last ITGA meeting, we began discussions about the ways in which our current budget crisis is affecting all of our departments, particularly in the areas of information technology. Most of our city departments are experiencing a reduction in personnel due to the early retirement incentive program, also attrition and potential of layoffs. The reduction in staff and shrinking department budgets will impact the ability to continue providing certain services or maintain certain functions at previous or current levels. This is why we need to explore different ways to address our budget gaps, but we're going to do this in an organized and collaborative manner. In addition to this meeting, there will be another meeting where staff will have the opportunity to go into further detail to discuss the items that are not covered here today. Departments and key staff have been instructed by council to explore all of the different possibilities and all of the viable options to begin to address the IT issues in every single department. I've instructed the CAO and the CLA, which they've been instructed to engage with key departments to look at some of the potential areas for change or improvement in IT operations. Most importantly, it is evident that the future of information technology within the city is incumbent upon the development of a short-term and long-term strategic plan. This is why we're here today. This is part of an information gathering process in which you will fully participate. A strategic plan for technology cannot exist without the input of IT systems division chiefs and the leadership of general managers. We want to know what you believe will work or will not work within your department. We, as a council, do not want to make decisions without your participation. It is important to have the best and most accurate information to move forward and make the best possible decisions. From here on, the ITGA committee will be the venue for those discussions as we move forward. It's important for you to know that we are not going to take any drastic actions or make decisions today or at our next meeting of this committee. We want you to work with the departments to identify areas that are of concern and meeting core responsibilities, but we also want your input into areas that may be good candidates for restructuring, consolidating, or contracting out. We need information from all of you. Next Tuesday, the third group of departments, the Department of Transportation, Public Works Contract Administration, Street Services, will be here to present their information as well. After that, the CAO and the CLA's working group will take the information you provide today and use it to formulate some recommendations for the restructuring of information technology citywide. In addition, I will ask the CAO and the CLA to convene regular meetings to address some of the structural problems that have brought us to where we are today. Also, again, just so that people understand the magnitude of all the moving parts when it comes to IT needs of this, the second-largest city in the country, it has been guesstimated that approximately half a billion dollars are moved forward of city funds and special funds toward our IT needs every single year. So this is certainly an area where we need to get a grasp of it, understand it, and make sure that we're running as efficiently as possible. Any comments?
No.
Any comment?
No comment.
Okay. We'll begin by calling up item number one.
Item number one is a discussion on possible actions relative to updates from various departments regarding their current technology systems and projects, the number of staff assigned to tech projects, the number of staff with IT responsibilities that are lost to eRIP, the source of funding for all tech projects, and a brief description of consolidation impacts on department operations.
They're not coming up today. They are. So start with them. Bureau of Engineering?
For the record. Want to note that I'm here for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. We do have a quorum. We have present all three members of this committee, Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Zion, and myself, Chairman Cardenas.
Thank you.
I thought everybody knew you were here.
Well, the microphone.
I heard the missing.
All right. Okay. Bureau of Engineering?
Mike Cantor, Deputy City Engineer. I'm here with Bob Gillette, our Director of Systems. The information that we submitted to the CLA, the spreadsheet, we summarized in pretty good detail what areas, IT areas, that we had in terms of areas that could be recommended for consolidation and others that would be more mission-critical. I don't know if you have a particular order in which you'd like me to go through this?
The order that you feel comfortable apprising the committee members as to what your needs are and what you see the current situation is and what you see potential changes might be.
Okay. Feel free to jump in any time. You know, the Bureau of Engineering is a knowledge-based organization. We have, in terms of just desktop systems, we have systems that are not generic desktops. We have, we consider our engineering workstations, we do a lot of AutoCAD, MicroStation, a lot of our core mission design effort is on workstations that are slightly different. So the, in the areas of support for those engineering workstations, those are things that we want to retain. And we, I know that the initial direction, if I'm understanding it correctly, is that help desk, sort of desktop support are the areas that they're looking at right now in terms of consolidation. So that, we don't, you know, we don't disagree that there can be efficiencies in consolidating some areas, but we have areas that are more specific to our needs that we would, we do not feel that a consolidation would be beneficial.
Well, one thing that we need you to understand is that whether it's a desktop or if it's a server-based system, whether it's particular software programs, whether they're programs that were designed specifically for your department or off-the-shelf programs or what have you, the bottom line is what we're expecting to do during this process is to evaluate what we currently have, the needs going forward, what systems are we, your department would require to have in the future, and also whether or not your department can justify that you will maintain them and/or be funded in-house for those purposes, or if we are going to have the IT department or a third party or anyone maintaining those systems that are proven to be needed into the future. So it's a little simplistic to assume that we're really looking to consolidate when it comes to the desktop-use systems, but the other ones really are too proprietary and they really should just be maintained as is. That's yet to be justified, and that's where you're going to need to step up and make sure that you speak up for your department when those, when that dialogue takes place.
Is the information that was submitted to the CLA, has that been consolidated in a report format that's been presented to the committee?
No, not yet.
We're in the process of doing that, and we're in the process of scheduling meetings with all the departments where you come to the working group and you submit similar and additional information, and that's where we're going to have the open dialogue with you. And at the end of that process, we'll compile all of the information into one report.
So is it just the questions regarding IT staff working in the department? How many are vacant? Is that the information that the committee would like today?
That's part of the information, sure.
We have, we have 31.
You have 31.
People in our systems division. And we have one position that is going to be lost to eRIP, so we're not significantly impacted by the eRIP.
So far.
Not in our systems division. As a bureau, we have significant impact, but, and we don't, we do very little contractual services. About 95% of our IT-related services are provided by city staff.
Within your department?
Yes. And of the 5%, we are phasing it out. So we will be, in terms of a timeline, within a year.
One will be phased out within the next three months.
One of your systems?
Consultants.
Oh, one of the consultants.
Will be phased out, and we're bringing that.
In-house?
In-house.
Okay. Do you have a lot of engineers within your department?
Yes.
I kind of figured that.
The Department of Engineering, and you're an engineer.
We don't have a lot of engineers in our systems division, but we do have a lot of engineers.
Ah. So what are those people in your systems division? What seems to be the most common degree or background that brings them to that expertise?
I'll let Bob answer.
So we do have.
Just some examples.
All of our, all of our systems people are IT people, except myself, who has an engineering background.
See, that's what I was gonna say. IT means a lot of things.
Right.
You have some people who actually are maybe electronic engineers or programmers or what have you, and then you have other people who acclimate very well to that and know how to manage those kind of folks, et cetera.
These are all IT people that do program development, application programmers, network engineer, software development, desktop support. What we've done is we've functionally put down what the areas and how many FTEs that we've got. A couple of things that are unique to our department is that we are multiple-funded, which means we have special-funded like wastewater, we have bond-funded things, we have general-funded. We have to track all of our hardware and software based on funding for the whole entire lifecycle, and so we have to track, you know, if somebody gets a new PC, that goes from wastewater to a wastewater person. It adds a little bit of administrative overhead to do that, but we have that built into what we do.
If you want specifically, of the 31 people that I mentioned, 16 are systems analyst twos, two programmer analyst threes, and two senior systems analyst twos, six senior systems analyst ones. So the majority of the personnel are in the systems classifications.
But you're not.
I am.
He's a Director of Systems.
But I have a background in engineering.
Right.
But I'm an IT person, Director of Systems. I spent 15 years in ITA, and I've been five years in the Bureau of Engineering.
I can't mean to go to war on power like everybody else.
You know, I like the engineers here. They're a great bunch of people to work for.
Yeah, some are.
Wish more people said that. Everybody seems to bail.
The, but what, for example, what's your degree in?
Biomedical engineering.
Yeah, but that's what I meant. I mean, obviously, you acclimated toward this on the job, your accumulated experience or what have you, puts you in a position where you actually, where you like these people you work with, that's good. But not only do you like them, obviously, you're able to communicate with them and.
I do, and I have a lot of experience with ITA, so I know where they have their strengths. And I, and I think that ITA has a lot of strengths, and I think that there are areas where we can consolidate, and we put that in here. And there are areas that we feel that decentralization is probably better, where you keep the function in-house, just because of the expertise or time factors, for example, our public counters is a revenue generator, we want to make sure those are up, because when they're up, they produce money for the city, a revenue stream. So we, that's a core function, we want to make sure we have 100% uptime on.
Sure. Priority service.
Right. Also, as a, as a department, you know, we're just one bureau in the Department of Public Works, but we have a significant number of employees at the Public Works Building. So a lot of these consolidations, maybe it's something that is, it is consolidated within a building, because there's a number of bureaus in, in the Public Works Building and a lot of employees. I mean, like you say, these are things to discuss over time and find out what is the best, the best way to do this.
Yeah, absolutely. See, the thing is, what I'm attempting to do and what this committee is hoping, hopefully going to be a part of, isn't going to be looking at this with a hatchet, but actually looking at it with a scalpel, so that at the end of the day, we can feel good about how much consolidation and where we did consolidation, how much we kept in place the way it was before and why it's going to remain that way, and also try to look at efficiencies and perhaps learn more from each other about what everyone is doing, so that perhaps where we can complement each other and we don't duplicate in the future, we can stop doing that. So that's, that's what this is about. This is not about, I don't think anybody on this committee has a line delineating what the goal of the amount of money we think we're going to save, or the goal of the number of jobs that we can actually consolidate. I don't know of anybody who has that in mind, but what we do have in mind is, rather than have an outcome expectation of numbers and dollars, what we do have is an outcome expectation as to what is justifiable. So that's where we're at. We don't, we don't have a dollar amount goal, we don't have a body count goal, we just have an expectation of having a better structured system in the future, because right now, we don't have a short-term or long-term plan for our IT. But perhaps a particular department does, and we'd love to hear that, not today, but throughout the process, and then perhaps, who knows, you might even be the model. You might hear your name mentioned in future meetings of how this particular department, after we've looked at them, they are doing things nine-tenths of the way very well, and on the one-tenth, you know, they admit that they can fix that, and that's the model, who knows? So one thing that I want to make sure you understand is that this is not some kind of expectation where you're going to get a haircut no matter what. That's not what we're here for.
Well, the Bureau of Engineering will be very supportive all along the way, and in the areas where we feel strongly that, that, you know, there are technologies that are very unique, we will, we will provide just, you know, we will, we'll do, we'll do the justifications, and we will come back and present in those areas. But I think we, we understand that, you know, there are benefits in consolidating some of these types of services, and we'll be very supportive.
Okay. And apparently, you don't have any systems that you identify at this time that are 24/7?
No.
You don't.
Okay. So they're mostly service provider systems, interacting with the public or and/or people in the field?
Right, we do capital improvement projects, and so that's a critical function within our department. We want to make sure those projects go ahead on time, because when we do that, then we save money in the building process, and then our public counters, which are not open 24 hours.
And it's a total of 19 systems, right?
Those are our major systems, yes.
Okay. All right. Any question? Any question?
Well, I think, I'm looking at the chart. Did you folks prepare the chart?
Yes.
This one? So I think you're reasonable and realistic. You know consolidation, eight, yes consolidation, nine, and could be two. So I mean, you're realistic. Some departments, I think you're coming in, no recommend, are recommended against, against, against. You got 20 items and, you know, they don't want to budge. So I think it's reasonable.
I think being in ITA 15 years, I have a.
A realistic approach.
I'm very empathetic to those people. I have a lot of.
Yeah. You've been there, you've seen it.
If you don't feel sorry for them, I don't want anybody feeling sorry for anybody.
Well, you're an engineer, we feel sorry for you.
Yeah, but that's you. I accept that.
Well, I think, anyway, I thought it was very realistic, and it shows me that you're balanced on it, because I've seen some that are way off the chart with, they don't want to budge, so I thank you for that, very realistic.
Okay. Anything else? Again, we're going to be dialoguing, and also the working group as well is going to be picking your brain, and that's going to be the opportunity for you to go into more detail about what you're doing and why it should stay that way, or the kinds of things you've identified that you can change, and how to invite that change. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Next, we have, street lighting going up today?
Yeah.
Okay. Bureau of Street Lighting?
My name is Nora Masahaki, and I'm Assistant Director for the Bureau of Street Lighting, and I have here Kurt Sata, who's our Senior Systems Analyst Two. Just to give you some information on our IT systems and a little bit on the Bureau of Street Lighting, the Bureau of Street Lighting has, has about seven personnel with an annual budget of about $750,000. Right now, we do not have an impact from eRIP. None of our IT systems personnel is going on eRIP. We, all of our systems, they basically run or access 24/5, but we do not have IT personnel that's on 24/5. And just to give you a little background on how our IT system is integrated with our bureau, as you're aware, we are responsible for the design, construction, and maintenance of over 200,000-plus streetlights in the city of Los Angeles, and we are 100% special-funded, primarily from the Street Lighting Maintenance Assessment Fund. And we're responsible for the integrity of that fund and how it complies with Prop 218. Now, we have a lot of systems internally, and they're kind of specialized. We go, we basically support illumination engineering, we have a GIS integration system, and our street lighting asset maintenance system. And the bureau's IT group is closely involved with these various functions, and all of this work is, is critical to our employee safety, adherence to our Proposition 218, and collection of our annual revenues. So all aspects of our IT, including our, our help desk, our data centers, our data storage, are all part of this work. Now, our IT group has four areas of responsibility. Basically, it's IT design support, the system support, which is the computers and all of those systems, our GIS, and our CAD support. Our, all of our systems in-house, they're, they're custom systems that are built by our IT staff. We really don't use a lot of consultants. We try to build most of our systems in-house so that we can go ahead and maintain it and retain the flexibility in order to adjust to ongoing circumstances. This includes our GIS software that provides for the placement of over 200,000 streetlights. And the streetlights, in addition to the location of the streetlights, it tracks the circuitry of the, of the streetlights, which include our low voltage and our high voltage systems. And this is accessed by our field personnel, which, this is one of the reasons that we feel very strongly that these systems have to be kept up to date, they have to be accurate, because when our field personnel goes out to de-energize or energize our systems, this is, has to do with employee safety. And in addition, these circuitry maps are accessed by the Department of Water and Power. Because we're not metered, we run directly into their vaults and transformers, we send our circuitry maps to their field staff, so that when they, so they can get the most latest up-to-date information. In addition to that, our GIS, this system is also used for our billing to DWP. We provide every month a bill statement of all of our fixtures. Because we're not metered, they can't just go ahead and read the consumption. We provide a bill statement to DWP of all of our fixtures and wattages, and they turn around and turn that into a bill, so that this, the accuracy of this system impacts our expenditures. And at the end of every year or throughout the year, we make sure that our Proposition 218 maps, which is our annual collection of our revenues, are kept up to date, and we provide that to the county. And that's very important, to make sure that any kind of land changes, any kind of additions or deletions of properties from the district is maintained, so that way we can get the proper revenue. If we have inaccuracies or if we have mistakes, we are billed for those mistakes from the county. So it's very important to try to maintain a very high, accurate information. And basically, one of the reasons that I guess we outlined all of our systems and how it's all closely related, is one of the reasons that we feel that we are specialized, we are 100% special-funded. And that is one of the reasons, at this point, we're looking at, and we're working in our ITGS working groups, and we're looking at all of the suggestions that are being brought up. We're trying to see where consolidation would make sense, where it would be an advantage, and we look at it from the aspect of our special fund. We don't want to increase any of our expenditures, we don't want to basically do anything that would detriment our revenue. And of course, we want to make sure we maintain everything that would be important or critical to our employee safety, as well as employee safety of DWP, because we're closely related to them as far as working on our circuits. So that's just a little background on how our IT group works in the bureau, so if you have any questions.
So, as of right now, your department is under the opinion that it would have a negative impact if we were to consolidate some of the.
Right now, what we've seen is that we feel that there would be a negative impact. We're waiting, working through the groups to see if there's anything that we can see that would help us as far as consolidation. But our GIS is all internal, we build it internally, and we have to adjust it internally. Our support, as far as getting support for computers and things like that, that's done, and right now, it's done on a quick, quick basis, so we don't see any advantages to that at this point. We have a very small group, it's only seven, and we have a very small budget. So it's kind of a flexible system, the way it's set up right now, but we are working through the groups to see if there's any areas that we would, we could see an advantage to the consolidation, but right now, we haven't seen anything.
Yeah, I'm surprised that the number of people you have is a bit small, being that you have so, so much automation and tracking going on.
Yeah, our personnel, they've been with us for a while, and they do a lot of customization. So we invest a lot of training in them to make sure that they're up to speed. Kurt's very good at that. And so we are, we are very proud of our systems that we've built, and we share that with DWP, because they, they like the accuracy of our system as far as their billing and their work out in the field.
So maybe Bureau of Street Lighting might be the model that people speak of.
We should have some kind of ribbon or something when all this is done, who gets to be the winner. Why not? Okay. Any questions?
Well, you have 31, you said?
Seven. We have a group of seven.
Oh, I'm sorry. Seven. I know what is leaving.
You went from 31 to seven.
That's pretty good, yeah.
Seven, it's, it's not a lot to shift over. No one at eRIP. And you say the whole operation is special-funded?
Yes.
Okay. Not anything else?
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, we have the City Clerk.
So zero IT staff in your department being lost to eRIP?
How many have we lost total in our department?
No, I mean, eRIP, you've lost a lot.
We have lost a lot.
But not in IT, huh?
Not in IT. We have significant number of vacancies in, in IT. I'm Holly Walcott with the Office of the City Clerk, and with me is Greg Allison, our Director of Systems. And I'm going to actually let Greg do most of the talking as our Director of Systems, but we just wanted to talk about, you know, what our critical systems applications are. As you all know, that we administer the municipal elections and currently the neighborhood council elections, so a significant number of our system staff is tied up in that effort. And then also, the council file management system, that's our other really big system, internal system. And as we move forward through this process, our number-one goal is, of course, to make sure that our business applications support the services that we provide, and I'll let Greg take it from there.
Okay. Thank you. I can summarize the systems, but in the interest of, you want me to summarize the systems? Okay. All right. We have a number of applications and systems which we've developed in-house to streamline our operations, assist in the workflow, and to keep up with the increased demand for information and services for our department. And the elected officials and public also place additional demands, as well as the new election requirements. We do have a 24-by-7 internet presence on the web. We do not provide formal 24/7 support, having said that, we do come in on weekends and evenings, you know, when certain things have issues, but we do not have a formal 24/7. But I can briefly highlight examples of four of our key major systems that have been developed and are supported in-house. As Holly mentioned, municipal neighborhood council elections and our other city agency elections, it's a roughly eight categories of systems which support every aspect of our department election process and operations, from the beginning of election all the way to doing the actual tally and tabulation and posting of the results of elections. As you know, the city of LA is one of the largest election jurisdictions in the country, with 2 million registered voters, we have 1,600 polling places, 89 neighborhood councils, we're conducting nine, what, 90?
90.
You're right, it is 90. We are, thank you. 90, and we're conducting nine regional elections this year for the neighborhood councils. Annually, there's more than 300 elections done in-house for agency Prop 218-type elections as well that many people are not aware of.
And you said annually?
Annually, yeah.
How many?
More than 300.
LA City?
Because every time they have one of those little lighting districts, they have to do a Prop 218, you're involved in.
Yeah. But agencies.
And then there's different boards, different lasers, there's different.
Pensions, unions.
Okay.
Yeah.
A whole lot of them.
It is.
Every single one of them are critically important. I mean, I'm not joking, right? I mean. I mean, because the accuracy, especially when you're looking at whether it's charter-mandated or it's something that has to do with Prop 218, it has to be as accurate as the presidential election, right?
It reflects on the city's integrity, yes.
Exactly.
And we've implemented a number of ballot scanning solutions to really, you know, try to automate and streamline that, but also have audit trails to avoid any complications that might arise out of questionable elections. LA City Clerk Connect is one of our umbrella-type systems. It contains the Council File Management System, which really is the lifeblood of our council public services operations. It's a combination of integrated, tightly interwoven, integrated systems. The applications are developed really based on workflows. We work very closely hand-in-hand with the Council and Public Services Division staff. It's not something you just, you know, take a slice out and somehow it continues to operate. It's very tightly interwoven. It includes, you know, we get 2.2 million record views on our Council File Management System a year. That's public and internal. We have 118,000 council files in the system, more than 100,000 online documents, so we have a fairly extensive online and scanning operation integration. One you're very familiar with is the Council and Committee Meetings Video and Audio On-Demand, which is the Granicus solution for video and audio on-demand. That's integrated...
You said 118,000 council files in the system?
Yes, and we add about 5,000 to 6,000 new council files every year.
How long do you have to keep those in the system?
Forever.
Forever?
They don't purge out?
No, they don't. But, you know, it's, but, you know, the benefit of that is, and we did make a conscious decision to make sure we had enough disk storage space to accommodate those kind of systems, because we see the benefit. There's a lot of historical review of that information. And so, on a go-forward basis, you know, at least we have the content there, and people do not have to come to the front counter, and it really saves a lot of time, staff as well.
So, it's, on the surface, 118,000 sounds like maybe we're holding on to too much or whatever, on the surface. But when you get right down to it, there's no other way around it. The City Clerk is the end-all-or-be-all for all of that record, correct?
But you can archive that, can't you?
Most of our, most of our older records are in archives.
We still do paper...
But it's still electronically held.
Not, we didn't go back, once we started the Council File Management System, we didn't go back to the beginning of time and scan older documents. There are many documents.
What's the...
I would have, I don't know how many there are.
Can you repeat the question?
Around, what's the cutoff? Was it 1967, pretty much forward, 1978 forward?
Well, yeah, 1979 is when the, a form of a Council File Management System existed, so we have just specific, you know, records. We don't have the online documents associated with that. We went full-blown, though, however, in 2008 with the online documents, and we did some backscanning, but it's really on a go-forward basis. It's significant. It's significant.
But we have every council file. If it was in paper, we didn't, we never purge any council file.
And the Council and Committee Videos On-Demand, which you're familiar with the Granicus, it's the web streaming videos, that's tightly integrated with the council voting system that you all use in council chambers. And we also have that tied closely into our agendas, and it's automated, so you can hyperlink within the agendas and see the council videos. We also have online council, the journals, referrals, ordinances, and contracts. We have agenda e-packets, so we have a significant amount of information that is online and integrated with our systems. Two other systems I just want to briefly highlight is our records management system that is Holly touched on. It's, it's a commercial off-the-shelf application, but it does manage, we use it for managing more than 165,000 record boxes in the Record Center. And it also for managing our city's historical archives. It's kind of a unique system, that's to the City Clerk. We also have Business Improvement Districts. We call it our Bids Management System, and that's our system that we provide the workflow and management of bids that have been approved or are operating, or those that are going through the legislative process. We currently have 38 established merchant and property bids and 18 proposed bids, which are under consideration. We did participate last week on the Working Committee for the Consolidation Initiatives. I thought it was a good first round of discussions with IT Consolidation Working Group and a good step towards making some, some good recommendations. Overall, our department, I believe, is very supportive, and on our spreadsheet, we indicated areas that we feel are strong candidates as starting points for the cost-saving initiatives, including the systems infrastructure, desktop, and help desk support. Again, the applications that are very unique to City Clerk, where we're working very, very closely, hand-in-hand on a workflow with our operations, those are the ones we'd be, you know, we'd want to take a much closer look at in a more substantial way. As far as positions, we have 12 regular authorities, two, and two resolution authorities. The two resolution authorities have actually been deleted from the budget previously and put back in, although they're not filled. We're, we have eight positions filled, and six are vacant. We're having a 42, 42.8% vacancy right now. This year's been very rough on us. But, you know, we get through it, and we focus on our applications, we've got our processes in place, we've streamlined much of our desktop support, server supports, and support with automated tools. We've done that for years now. And so, that lets us really, you know, do, have economies of scale, as far as support goes right now. Budget, 1.2 million in labor, annual software licensing is $70,000. We do not have any outside contractors, and we do not have a regular standing budget for outside contractors. We have used outside services for like mass scanning or, you know, small, short-term initiatives. I guess that concludes our comments.
We're happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
How long you been with the city?
26 years.
Really?
Wow.
Well...
You look good.
I, I was in ITA for 14 years. I started as an intern there, it was a wonderful career, and I moved into the City Clerk and took my knowledge there and applied it.
30 years old.
We have an excellent working relationship with ITA.
So, it sounds like that's a good background to have the IT experience.
It, I think it's good to have an IT background and to have some understanding of how the ITA operates, the different functions that are provided, where the benefits are, similar to what Bureau of Engineering had stated, where we have strengths and where ITA has strengths. I think we should definitely leverage those.
And what about our hardware? Our software?
As far as hardware support?
With, in your, the Clerk's office?
Well, we have two server rooms. We do have 380 PCs. Keep in mind, though, that is, we double the size of our department every election cycle, and a lot of that equipment is in support of our election processes. We have storage area networks, which we described in last week's meeting. So, we do have a fair amount of equipment. We're certainly open, we don't even have dedicated positions for that any longer, now that they're vacant. So, we're certainly open to working out a relationship with ITA, or outsourcing some of that.
Is that equipment up to date?
It, we, it's, it's fairly...
It's not at the end of its life, but it's not exactly new.
Thank you. That's correct. We definitely have extended the life of our PCs. We initially were going for a five-year lifespan, some of those are as long as eight years old, but as long as they're working and we can find a purpose for them, we want to use them. But all of our software is standardized and up-to-date on our workstations.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Community Development Department, CDD.
Rhonda Gaston, Assistant General Manager, Community Development Department. And joining me are the Deputy Chiefs of our Computer Services Division, Mimi Dolan and Ken Smith. In terms of our presentation today, I will provide an overview of the department and its systems, but defer to our directors to actually give you more information on each of the specific programs. The Community Development Department is 100% grant-funded, special revenue streams. Our IT budget is about $3.8 million. With that money, we actually support 15 internal CDD staff, as well as provide funding for three ITA staff. We also have about $400,000 allocated for outside or contract programmers to provide support related to our specific grant programs that we administer. Currently, we have four critical systems. Two are web-based, which are available for access 24/7, although they are not supported by staff 24/7, only during business hours. Those systems are our Integrated Services Information System, which is our data collection that help us actually provide the reporting requirements back to our funding sources. We also have the Complan Application System, which is related to the Community Development Block Grant Program component of the city's consolidated plan process. And then we have internal systems that help the city actually track compliance with all of our grantors, grantees, I'm sorry. In terms of our unique IT functions, again, the department is purely grant-funded. We need information related to reporting back to grantors' specific performance measurements, as well as the financial information related to each one of our specific grants. We currently administer several different grants. The primary ones are CDBG, Workforce Investment Act dollars, Community Services Block Grant, which is HHS money passed through the state. And then we have other miscellaneous grant revenue streams. In terms of consolidation, the department has looked at where we can actually look to increase our cooperation with ITA. There are three areas that could potentially be consolidated, however, there is caution. We have a help desk, we have two staff actually assigned to assist staff with computers, as well as approximately 300 community-based organizations. So, when we look at consolidating with the city, we have to caution that not only are you supporting city staff, the 272 positions within the department, but also the staff that are working on grant programs that the city funds, and again, that's about 300 contractors. We also looked at phone and BlackBerry support, and we currently have 0.25% FTE related to each one of those particular systems. And then I'll turn it over to Mimi and to Ken to actually talk about each one of the four systems that we have.
You said FTE? What are you referring to?
Full-time equivalent.
Right now, we're currently supporting the, as Rhonda had mentioned, our ISIS is all of our participant tracking and reporting back to our grantors. We have an automated system where all of our agencies are on the internet, they enter in participant data of the clients that they're serving, their demographics, their eligibility requirements, their case management, their services provided, the outcomes that are provided, or obtained. And all of that is rolled up and electronically transferred to the state, so that we don't have duplicate data entry. It's very specific to 13 of our programs. We have 13 different modules under our ISIS umbrella, and that allows the department to see when clients are a continuum of services throughout our different grant sources. Our Complan Application System, as Rhonda had mentioned, is, again, 24/7, it's internet applications for applying for CDBG funds online. And anybody can do it, any of the agencies that, when we open up to the CBOs, any of the other departments that are applying for Complan applications can log on at any given time and apply for their funds. Those funds are then, go through an approval process for eligibility, they get prioritized, they get, the program expenditure plans are online, and those all then get rolled up and reviewed by the CEO and by the certain council members, or, you know, for their particular areas. They're compiled through the mayor's office, and recommendations on our sensitivity. So, those two are very, very specific to our department. The internal applications that we have, basically, our core business is contracting out the federal and state monies that we get. So, we have compliance monitoring, we have contract tracking, so at any given time, anybody can find out where a contract is and what status is at. The fiscal compliance, the contractor compliance for any of the city ordinances that are required. We have cost allocation systems that are required to be able to report back to our funding sources on exactly how the funds are being spent and split over different staff members that may work on several different grant sources at one time. And then we have our budget tracking systems and our financial loan processing systems. So, basically, one of all of our, our systems are customized for the department. They were developed within-house staff and some contractor staff. Most of the ISIS, the external tracking systems are through contractor staff, through our chase contract. The money has been put into the grant-funded sources to say that we're going to be providing you this amount of money, but you need to be able to track that information and track your outcomes. So, that's part of those funding sources budget. And then I'll let Ken talk about our infrastructure, our hardware costs.
Currently, we have 13 servers. We're in the midst of consolidating. We would just approve this year to consolidate those to three servers. We're developing a cluster, and the data storage, we currently have 2.3 terabytes worth of data that we're storing. ITA is in the midst of approving us to migrate to a six-terabyte SAN. So, the 13 servers will be consolidated to three servers with, will allow us to cluster and maintain those. Currently, we just finished our migration from GroupWise to Gmail, which has helped us to reduce our data storage on our servers, especially with our backup of our archives of GroupWise. And now, that's going to be stored on Gmail. So, our data storage did reduce on that fact, but we're required to maintain federal and state documents for a number of years on the site, as well as send them to Iron Mountain for data storage. Currently, my staff supports over 330 users. They're spread across the city. Currently, this year, we just did a...
Redesign or restructuring of the department where we have decentralized and we have satellite offices now?
And we have, we have currently 20 satellite offices from the valley, which is North Valley, South Valley, all the way down to the Watts area. And currently, I have six staff maintaining those PCs. This year, we just implemented remote control of those PCs at those sites, where we're supporting 60 users, which we didn't have to increase our staff size due to the ability to remote control those PCs remotely.
And I also would like to add that the department is also looking at how to integrate some of the functions that the mayor and council have just approved to be transferred over into CDD from the Human Services Department. And I believe there is also a proposal on the table related to some functions of Dunn coming over. So, that will be additional impact in terms of the number of PCs and the number of, the amount of assistance that the CDD has to provide in terms of IT.
Thank you. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you very much.
My name is Nam Nguyen. I'm the Director of Systems at a Controller's Office. The Controller's Office supports the proposed consolidation of servers, storage area networks, help desk, and network infrastructure in the city. The proposed consolidation has minimal impact to the Controller's operation, mainly because most of our critical applications, such as the financial management system or the payroll systems, are already managed by ITA technical staff. The Controller, however, does have a system division, and our staff have a mixed number of employee position in system analysts, fiscal system specialists, as well as financial management specialists. However, they perform as a business analysis and perform other function that are done for major city-wide systems, such as a quality assuring tester, trainers, and facilitator of implementation of changes to the systems for citywide. The main function of the Controller's Office are auditing, financial operations, and financial reporting. And as I mentioned, the most critical system for us are the financial system and the payroll system, as well as the pension system. Historically, we've been providing services for the Fire and Police Pensions Department. They are in the process of phasing out or implementing a new system, but we are still supporting that issuing of pension checks to pensioners for the Department of Fire and Police Pensions until they, that new system is implemented.
Are they going to do that themselves, then?
I believe that they do that with contractors. And in terms of the, our unique need in the Controller's Office, we do have a, need to have ability to track, reconcile, and audit all payments issued by the city controllers, as well as the ability to quickly provide... We are not a 24/7 operation, and we don't have a staff to support that. I think in addition to the financial information systems and the payroll system, we also have a number of other major systems, such as the distributed time system, which allow the city employee to report their time with our paper. We implemented lately the online direct deposit system, and we continue to push for that. We also have other systems, such as the check reconciliation systems. For every payment that we made, we have to have the ability to make sure that fraudulent checks are not issued and the check casts are properly accounted for. We have the citywide cost accounting system, which is the main system to record both labor and material costs that enable cost accounting department to submit reimbursement for, to grantors. And that integrates with the payroll system, as well as the city financial system. In addition to that, there's a, an advanced receivable system, which allow the city to issue letters for, and an account for the receivable money. Check printing system, although majority of the checks are currently still being printed by ITA, we do have a local check printing operation to handle emergency check situation. And then we have one key system that supports auditing division, and we call it a teammate, which is like a workflow system that allow auditors to collaborate and to report on their audit finding. In terms of the, the level of support, our financial and payroll system require the highest level of service because they are deadline-oriented. Budgetary information...
And they have massive amounts of...
Yes, and they have massive amount of data. They have historically been maintained by ITA in terms of infrastructure, such as a server and programming effort. But it's critical because the budgetary data and encumbrance of funds have to be recorded timely in order to support procurement of goods and services, as well as the vendors have to be paid on time to maximize discount and minimize penalties. And employee obviously have to be paid correctly in every pay period. And that's our mission, and we have not failed for the last 30 years to pay employee on time.
Unlike the school district.
Yeah, we heard quite a number of stories about their latest implementation, and that is in quite contrast the city's effort in gradually implementing a new payroll system, which we now know as PACER. And in terms of the, the function of the system division of my staff, we continue to work with ITA as one team to support the citywide financial and payroll systems. And we monitor that on a daily basis to make sure that it's not going to be problematic during work hours, because every hour that we are down, it's impacting hundreds of payroll supervisors and accountants around the city. So that is very critical for us. In terms of the area that we suggested for further consolidation, consolidation, we think that an area that, in addition to what has been proposed, the area of designing the webpage for the apartment and the city, if we have a centralized group that handle that, it may yield more consistent look and feel, and that could help the public to easily obtain information, as well as the business community to do business with the city. And that's the end of my presentation.
How old is our PACERS?
The PACER system is, the project started in the year 2000. And learning from the past two fail project, we took a implemental incremental implementation approach, which is we make sure that one piece of the system functioning well before we move on to the next module. And we do that in a parallel mode, meaning that it's completely transparent to all city employee and the department. And therefore, there would be no interruption in terms of the paychecks. And we can use one system to validate the accuracy of the other system along the way. We are working with ITA with an objective to hopefully, in the next six months, to be able to retire the legacy system completely. But all in all, we have been able to use the new payroll system to react very quickly to latest labor agreements and be able to implement many provisions that would be impossible if we do not have the new system in place now.
With our checks, we no longer, on direct deposit, receive a receipt. It's all electronic. You have to check your account to make sure it's deposited. How many people do we still have on the regular check system?
We have about 80, about 14% of city employee are still on, on paper.
Hard copy.
And hard copy.
At one time...
And about 7,000 are still receiving checks. And that's out of 50,000 check and direct deposit statement that we issue every pay period.
Well, I spoke to our former controller about forcing everyone into a direct deposit of one sort or another. Whatever happened with that project?
What we...
It would save money and save cost.
What we look for in that effort is, number one, from an IIS perspective, we cannot force the employee to go on to direct deposit. We can only do campaign to encourage them to join direct deposit. So I think the problem with that is more of a legal question than the technical question.
Because it'd be a major savings if everyone was on a direct deposit.
Yeah, for everyone who are on direct deposit, we save about 50 cents in terms of printing costs and delivery costs.
Every two weeks.
Every two weeks.
So it's a dollar a month?
Yeah. For every employee, that about $26.
Do we have any intention of trying to push that again?
We intend to, to do more campaign to encourage employee to, to join direct deposit. And we continue to look for options that could be offered by the bank to, to entice the employee to join the program, one of which that we looked at in the past, which we have not been able to successfully get to the end of that, which is the, the ability for the bank to issue their debit card for those who cannot open an account, a bank account.
I was involved in that one, too. What happened with that?
That, that one was the, there was an effort to work with the vendor, but I think the structure that they provided was not proven to be cost-effective, especially when they start charging a fee for withdrawing money if employee happened to incur more than three transactions. And I think because of that, we didn't think that that would be a workable solution. But I think as, as we continue to look into this area, I think, I hope that one day we'll be able to find a vendor that will meet the requirements for, to work with us in terms of issuing a free debit card and free services.
There was an RFP on it, I recall.
That was more for transitioning the, I believe that has to do with the transition of Bank of America to what's called...
When I was on IT before, we were trying to get the debit card where folks that didn't have a checking account, they would get a debit card, and then their check would be deposited into that account, and they would use that card to draw from that.
Yes.
Without a charge to the city employee. Maybe that's where it went sideways.
Yeah, there was no charge for, for the, the issuing of the debit card, but there's service charge, which would not...
Okay, that's what they were doing. Can't trust the banks.
Yeah.
Oh, there was supposed to be a no charge to employees. There's no charge for the card, but every time you take money out, they're going to charge it.
Yes. I think after the three time that they used the bank for the, within the pay period.
Then they would charge.
It would be charged.
Anyway, at the time we discussed it, when I was on IT in the past, it was, it was a considerable cost savings to the city with the paper, et cetera. Working, what's it, do you remember the name of the institution that was, I thought it was the RFP, and we got a few selections back?
I think, I don't remember the name of the bank offhand, but I can...
It's been a few years.
Provide that information to the committee later on, if that is of interest.
Just another way to save some money.
And we continue to work with the working group to provide feedback to the consolidation effort.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much. Thank you. Massive systems.
Yep.
Finance.
Good afternoon. Antoinette Crisival, Director of Finance with the Office of Finance, and with me today is Carl Sampson. He is our Director of Systems. I'm going to provide a brief overview, and Carl will speak more about the systems. The Office of Finance has about eight IT staff. One of the positions is vacant, and two part-time student workers.
Oh, okay.
Our annual IT expenses are about 1.3 million, of which 850,000 represents salaries and 450,000 represents hardware, software maintenance support.
So you have two part-time, eight full-time, and one of the full-time is vacant?
That's correct.
So you have seven full-time people right now?
Right. That's correct. Yes.
And Carl, are you one of those seven?
Yes, he is. Yes. We don't have any e-rep vacancies within our systems division, which is good. But one thing I do want to state is that we do have 15 ITA staff that are supporting the LE tax system. So we believe that there is centralization there from the standpoint that they are supporting a very, very critical system. I think, you know, overall, our responsibilities are revenue generation and collection, and we're responsible for collecting over 2.5 billion annually. So we're very dependent upon technology to generate and collect the revenue for the city overall. And Carl, I'll let you speak about the systems.
First off is our LE tax system, and that's certainly the centerpiece of everything that we do within the Office of Finance. It really integrates with all of our work processes within the office, whether it's our administration of all the business taxes or any of the taxes and the permits, along with our audits, assessment, you know, anything that needs to be referred on to collection agencies. It's really central to all of our operations. Upon implementation of the system, we were able to redeploy a lot of our positions that were doing manually work previously, as well as push out a lot of work that we were doing in the Office of Finance, such as a lot of our data entry based on renewals that come in or bills that come in. It's really done by the bank now, and we receive automated files from the bank and automatically import those into the system. It's very critical to us in sense that throughout all of our operations, the number of accounts that we've administered since 2000 have increased by 73%, but we've been able to do that with existing staff pretty much that was there at the start of the implementation. In addition to that, there's a lot of functionality in the system that has greatly increased the revenue collection. In the business tax area alone, we can probably attribute between 25 to 30 million dollars on an annual basis that we bring in that would not have been there had we not implemented the system. So all in all, that's our cornerstone of our operations that we conduct. And as Antoinette mentioned, that's essentially supported by ITA staff that's on-site with us. Another important system that we have is our Tax Discovery System. That's a system that we built in-house, and that is the system that we utilize to identify businesses that are not on our tax rolls. And so we use that to import and match data from third-party data sources, including the state of California's tax rolls under AB 63. We've been successful in being able to register approximately 133,000 new taxpayer accounts through that program. Just AB 63 alone has brought in over 115 million dollars through the life of that process. And as of last year, Tax Discovery Programs accounted for 16% of our business tax revenue, or almost 70 million dollars. And that's what that one system does for us. We do a lot of other work in terms of supporting reports and data analysis. We respond to a lot of CPRA requests, requests from outside of our department, requests from other working groups, such as BTAC. We work hand-in-hand with a lot of our users out there in the Office of Finance, like audit, doing, working with them for strategic targeting of audits and whatnot, and really providing them that sort of expertise to be able to get the information from the system. We also support a document imaging system that we're in the process of rolling out using Documentum. That is sort of partly centralized in the sense that we use the ITA's enterprise architecture for Documentum, and so we're using all of the server's foundation that they have, that they administer for that. And, you know, we've been able to work on other projects within finance. We've been able to roll out a new credit card fee implementation over the past year, which passed the charges back to the taxpayers for use of credit cards. And so we worked on implementing that, implementing all the card terminals, and we projected savings of about 2 million dollars on an annual basis by implementing that. And we've recognized about 860,000 in savings since mid-December on that alone, right now in this peak season. So that's, that's everything that we've been doing on an ongoing basis and currently support. For this upcoming year, there's a real focus that we want to put on rolling out more web functionality. We started off by providing the ability for taxpayers to renew their business tax renewals online, and over 140,000 people did that last year, and even more are doing that this year. And we've rolled out the ability for police alarm permits for registration and renewals on that. We did that this past year. I think we had about 30,000 or 40,000 people start off and use that during this latest renewal cycle. And what we really want to do is we want to bring forward all of the different services that we provide over the counter and provide it over the web, with the goal of, we just kind of threw a target out there, of about 50% of everything that we interact with businesses or permit holders, if we could do that online. And that's, you know, as part of our upcoming budget proposal in terms of, you know, managing our resources, we're really counting on that as being a part of that. We're also working on a tax intercept program that will be looking at ensuring that all our vendors that we pay as a city are compliant with their business tax and be able to intercept any of those monies should they not be, and then also using those sources as additional tools for compliance and audit and discovery as well. And really, you know, our, our challenges are really with working with a relatively small staff on, on just the Office of Finance side. We have to respond to a variety of different things. So, you know, on our, on our true IT help desk, you know, we have one full-time position equivalent and the two student workers that are fulfilling that role. But we also, we also have to sort of beg and borrow between the different duties that we do. So when there's, when we're cutting over to the new email system, I have to have four people do a lot of work, so I have to slow down in some of the other areas. Or we're moving to a new location, most, from Wilshire to Garland, there's a lot of work that's associated with that.
When is it?
April.
That's in April.
April.
So, you know, that's one of the things that we really look in terms of, the staff that we have, is really, we have minimal cross-training, we have minimal backup, just because we have a small staff, and we really need to, that's one of the concerns that we have, is trying to maintain that flexibility.
But you also utilize services of IT?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Actually, substantially relative to the LE tax system, which is very key, so...
And we had the, the meetings and discussions on, on the working group that was talking about the storage area network and the server administration and the help desk. And the storage area network devices that we have are fully administered by ITA right now. So, you know, that's one of the things that we really look in terms of, the staff that we have, is really, we have minimal cross-training, we have minimal backup, just because we have a small staff, and we really need to, that's one of the concerns that we have, is trying to maintain that flexibility.
But you also utilize services of IT?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Actually substantially relative to the LA tax system, which is very key, so.
And we had the, the meetings and discussions on, on the working group that was talking about the Storage Area Network and the server administration and the help desk. And the Storage Area Network devices that we have are fully administered by ITA right now. And in the server environment, for the most part, all the technical, the highly technical items, they have been administered by ITA because they're more related to the LA tax project. And so in terms of any other consolidations, whether it be help desk or the remaining servers, it's one of those things we need to kinda discuss and talk through the process. But we're certainly open to it as long as we can have, you know, the service levels that we need and our concerns addressed.
Any questions?
About three. Credit card, when someone pays their alarm fee by credit card through the internet, do we charge them a fee for that?
No, not for alarms.
You mentioned something about credit card charge?
Yeah, we, we.
Credit card company.
Yeah. What, what happens is, is that the credit card company will charge the merchant or the city a fee based on use of the card. And so, and that can vary depending on the card. So if you have a card that gets you airline miles or significant rewards, that's actually passed on to the vendor, and the vendor, us, would have to front that. And what we can do, and what the credit card companies allow, is allows us to pass on that cost for tax-related liabilities. And so we're able to do that for business tax, parking tax, the other types of taxes, but not for the permits such as the police.
And then the other question is downtown vendors. It's oftentimes said there's a lot of cash that's transacted with the vendors in the garment district. How do we go after those folks to pay the taxes?
Well, I mean, that's, that's a tricky one for sure. We do have field enforcement staff that do sweeps in various areas throughout the city, in particular the downtown area. And so they, they do, from time to time, visit certain businesses such as the garment industry. But cash-based businesses are very tough. We have the same situation with parking, where the parking occupancy tax that's collected by the parking lot attendants or operators is mostly a cash-based business. We do have an outside contractor that assists us in auditing those particular parking lot operators by doing surveillances, counting the cars and a number of things, to determine how much they should have remitted to the city. So there are various things that we have in place, but of course, cash-based businesses are, are the most difficult for us.
Are those computerized? That we, that we do the, shall we say, the sting operations? Do we, is that information computerized? Will we capture that data?
The information is captured in the LA tax, in terms of what they actually report to us, is in the LA tax system. We do validations by visiting some of these businesses, determining, based on what we've observed, what they really should be remitting, whether they're in the proper business tax classification, and a number of things. And if we feel that they are misclassified or underreporting, the field investigators will refer those particular businesses to the Audit Division, who will perform an audit.
Have you ever been to Italy?
No, but I know they use guns to collect taxes.
They do.
Uh-huh.
What?
He told me that.
In Italy, they have the tax police, and they're armed.
Yes.
And if you don't pay your taxes, they come out there and take care of business.
We're much nicer.
Well, the IRS has guys with guns.
Well, I know, but I was amazed at Italy how they do it. They, they look like police, and they're actually tax collectors, armed tax collectors. They don't get robbed and they take care of it.
I bet they don't.
Anyway, I thought that was interesting.
So you're not post-certified?
No.
But she's dangerous enough.
I'm a certified public accountant, but that's about it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Next, we have Lasers.
Laser pension.
Good afternoon. Tom, out as Lasers. We have 11 staff members.
Hold on, hold on one second. Case Bureau of Street Services are here, we're gonna hear yours next week. Transportation, we're gonna hear yours next week. And the Treasurer's Office, we're gonna hear yours next week. And Bureau of Contract Administration, we mentioned earlier that that would be next week. And anybody else at all?
No, that's it.
Recreation and Parks?
Recreation and Parks, you're up, after Personnel. So just for those of you in the room, if you don't hear your department, then you're gonna be next week. Or maybe we don't know you exist, because you're not on either list. Library, Personnel, Recreation and Parks today, and the Zoo today. Okay?
So.
Anybody else here?
Four left and right.
Yeah. Library, Personnel, Recreation Parks, and the Zoo. And we're currently on Lasers.
So we have 11 staff members involved with IT, and other than Madley processing eRIP applications, we are otherwise not impacted by eRIP on our IT staff. The IT staff's involved with everything from application development, network support, support of our Pension Administration system, and our document imaging system, which are the backbones of, of our work over there, as well as web development and maintenance. The IT expenditures for Lasers are paid directly from Lasers Trust Fund. Our Board of Administration has exclusive authority regarding the administration of that fund pursuant to the California Constitution and City Charter. Our Board has fiduciary responsibility to ensure that the benefits are paid to our members accurately and timely, and knowledge-based IT support plays a very critical role in that. Especially in light of the challenging fiscal climate facing the city, IT consolidation would bring into question whether IT support could be sustained at the level and priority required and currently present within Lasers internal staff. Maintaining Lasers internal IT support is especially important from a disaster recovery perspective when we will need significant dedicated IT resources at a time when the city's IT resources would be stretched very thin, and Lasers understandably would not be a high priority for the city compared to public safety and other competing interests. Lasers will gladly continue to collaborate with ITA when it makes sense to do so within our fiduciary responsibility to our members and where there are synergies and cost efficiencies for both.
Any questions?
No.
You are retired?
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Go now.
But you're not collecting the pension?
Not officially retired, just from the presentation. Library, Library Department.
Good afternoon. My name is Steve Newcomer. I'm the Director of Information Technologies and Collections for the Los Angeles Public Library. And as you know, technology is key to about everything the Los Angeles Public Library does. And our main goal is, and has been for many years, to bridge the digital divide. So whether you are one of the 17 million people who visited our 73 libraries last year and checked out one of the 19 million books we circulated, or whether you're one of the 3.5 million people who made a free reservation at one of our 2,400 public computers, it is technology that facilitated your access to the information. And the library technology program is guided by a state-approved technology plan. I believe the library is the only city department required to possess a state-approved technology plan, and that's so that we may qualify for deep educational institution discounts. The plan that we currently have was approved by the Board of Library Commissioners and vetted in a public forum. The library is unique among city departments in that its technology program is public-oriented and content-based. And as you know, it provides free public access to such diverse resources as 100 research databases, live online homework help, literacy programs, special homework sites for kids and teens and Spanish speakers, podcasts of community events, digitized collections of photos and maps, among other things, downloadable audiobooks, videos, and music, and access to your library account 24/7, as well as public wireless access in all of our facilities. These services are managed by the library's IT staff, which consists of 17 systems personnel with an annual cost of 1.4 million dollars. The library's 17 IT staff are grouped in three major units, as indicated on the spreadsheet we provided. We have not lost any staff to eRIP. The three groupings are network support, which is responsible for the maintenance and upgrade of the library's 250 servers, hundreds of routers, wireless access points, network connections, phone system, and email system. The client support group is responsible for managing the help desk, installing, maintaining, and upgrading the library's 3,500 computers, 250 printers, computer reservation system, print management system, and self-service kiosks at all of our 73 libraries. And then the third IT grouping, grouping is the Integrated Library System and Web Support Group, which is responsible for managing the library's core technology, which is the system that enables books and magazines to be selected, ordered, catalogued, and checked out, and for patrons to be able to know what the library has in its collection, place holds on titles, and pay their fines. Staff also maintains access to the dozens of subscription databases and electronic resources provided via the library website. The website had over 140 million visitors last year. So the IT operation is an efficient one. Its technicians, technicians are trained by library staff to understand and troubleshoot the equipment and applications made, made available to the public. Our help desk staff is often able to resolve issues over the phone, resulting in prompt resolution to patron problems. Each library computer technician services about 500 PCs per person. The library, as you know, was a recent recipient of a $5 million federal stimulus grant to upgrade our technology infrastructure. Library IT staff is now gearing up for this two-year project, which will basically refresh nearly all of our technology infrastructure. So now more than ever, we need to rely on our trained IT staff who are knowledgeable of our systems and able to fulfill the grant obligations. And our technology plan requires that library technology staff receive training on the library-specific hardware and software. So for these reasons, we don't advise consolidating IT staff, but we do, are in favor and are participating in the IT consolidation on the Gmail system, and we are looking forward to that because it will relieve a workload for, for our current IT staff.
The $5 million grant, have, has the Library Department delineated how much of that is gonna go to hardware, software, personnel costs?
It's, it's almost entirely hardware. We're replacing, a lot of our computers are now seven and eight years old that the public are using, so they are quickly deteriorating, to say the least. So we will, we hope to replace over 1,200 of the public computers, replace the servers and routers in all of our libraries, all of our wireless access points. So it's 90, over 90% hardware.
Okay. And how much of that planning took place in-house, and how much of it took place with the collaboration with the IT department?
Well, the, the hardware needs were all delineated by the Library Department. The federal grant plan was a very large collaboration with ITA, as well as the library to.
So the submission of the grant was a large collaboration with IT and the Library Department? But the actual, once the grant is received, the library IT staff are gonna handle most of the, all that?
It'll be 100% done by the library, right?
Question?
Yeah.
Were, are you, were you a librarian?
I was, and I continue to be a librarian.
But you're the head of the IT folk?
Correct, right.
Turn the book to the computer, huh, for the computer?
I'm sorry?
Turn in the books for the computer.
No, he never turns in, librarian has never turned in books.
That's right, we, uh.
You can get books on a computer.
We read them, right, right. We read them on the computer.
You read them on the computer? They have now, that new device.
In fact, we have several thousand that you can download off of our website, so.
But they have that new handheld device where you can download the books right onto the.
They have various handheld devices. Some of them are proprietary to the various companies, like Amazon has Kindle, so you can only get books for the Kindle from Amazon, but.
Do we have a system that subscribes for the reader, so they can, if they have that computer, they have to go to Amazon?
We, we subscribe to various electronic books that can be downloaded to devices other than the Kindle.
Okay, okay. So we definitely are high-tech with it?
We try to be as much as we can with our limited resources.
And a personal question, I gotta ask this question. You're a librarian?
Right.
Before computers became popular, right?
That's right.
Now you understand and appreciate computers, and it really allows a lot more expansion of access, right?
Absolutely.
But are you ever gonna get rid of your book library?
I would hope not. I can't, I can't imagine a day when there won't be a, a need for books and for the printed word.
They're getting rid of newspapers, though.
Right, newspapers, I can see the day coming.
I'm not gonna cry when that happens, especially the LA Times.
Well, they only, they didn't pick on me today.
Those great novels are still best read with a book in hand.
It's, it's not just nostalgic, there, there's more to it.
Oh, yeah. There's, the publishing industry is going quite strong, yeah.
They now have the first two TVs coming out 3D, 3D televisions now. So it was black and white color TV, plasma, now it's 3D.
But when, but when the electricity goes out, a candle and a book, you're, you're in business, right?
There you go, right.
Thank you.
You get a romantic candle and a book. With four kids, you should be romantic.
Personnel.
Good afternoon. Michael De La Rosa with the Personnel Department. With me I have Keith Giles from our IT group. Personnel has approximately $2.8 million budgeted for IT and IT-related functions. Approximately 800,000 of that is dedicated to staffing.
What's your name again?
Michael De La Rosa.
Michael De La Rosa.
Correct.
How long you been with the city?
20 years.
20 years?
Yes.
Yeah. I can handle this part. Thank you.
Of the.
You have any brothers and sisters?
Yes.
You related to?
Brother named Tony?
Yes.
You related to him?
No.
No. His brother was my roommate in college.
Really? What's, what's your brother do?
What does he do? He's currently unemployed.
Well, obviously, you must have studied harder.
It's a personal matter, but Tony's a good, good, good guy. And he, he had an accident, a car accident. But very smart, got his degree, and Tony got his degree and everything, but.
Very good.
Anyway, but, go ahead.
Okay. Of the remaining 2 million in our budget, approximately 1.5 is dedicated to our workers' compensation program and maintenance of the system. We have over 400 users in our department, and servers reside in our facility over on Vignus and Temple Street. And we have approximately 10 budgeted positions to support all of our IT needs. We have two people leave our IT group under the eRIP program, and we currently have a number of critical systems that Keith will address.
Yeah. Critical systems, initially we have our workers' compensation process, which takes up a lot of our time. We also, currently, high priority is our layoff processing, and the expedited transfers into special funds, that's going on a lot right now. Our other two critical areas are public safety recruitment and backgrounds in hiring, and entry-level and promotional exam processing. As far as unique needs for our department, we have our CAPS-2 system and the layoff system. CAPS-2 being our applicant processing, all exams are processed through that system right now. Both of those are written using an old language called PAL-BELDA. It's very hard to find any kind of skill set anywhere else in the city right now. That's why we really need to keep those people with the department. And our workers' compensation imaging system is also very unique in that it's just about the last file net system out there. Everybody else has gone to Documentum, so we need to keep that skill also. As far as 24/7 operations within the department, we only have our application, our online application process that runs 24/7. It lets applicants apply at any time.
But, but, excuse me, you have some 24/7 applications, but they're not like emergency critical type? You know, not like 911 type like that. They're accessible 24/7. So if somebody wants to go ahead and decide, I'm gonna fill out an app. gonna fill out an application at four in the morning, it's accessible twenty-four-seven?
And they do, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't provide twenty-four-seven support, but they are available twenty-four-seven. As far as potential risks for consolidation, the department is really concerned that we will need to receive the same kind of support that we're getting right now. We're particularly concerned about delays in processing of layoffs, should our IT support not be as available as it is now, and delays in processing workers' comp claims, it can also lead to significant fines and penalties. Do you have any other questions?
You have thirty-four IT projects?
We have a lot of projects, yeah.
Yeah, just a lot of moving parts there. The, but you only have twelve positions?
Correct.
So how much of your current activity and/or support comes from the IT department? Very minimal, or they're active on a day-to-day basis?
It's, it's pretty minimal. They're, they were more active with our old legacy systems. Most of the new systems have been developed in-house or with contractor support, and they're fully supported in-house, other than one contractor.
And what's your annual budget that you attribute to IT?
To IT, it's about eight hundred thousand?
For staffing, eight hundred thousand, two million for other expenses. One point five of that is dedicated to the workers' compensation system. And then we have other minimal, small contracts for support of the CAPS system.
So your workers' compensation system is your biggest IT system that you support?
Dollar-wise, yes.
Or they require the most activity in-house?
We have a third-party contractor to support maintenance of the system. It's a, a very large system that processes a lot of data.
They actually host the system in Irvine, which is where most of the costs go.
Okay, and that system is at the beginning of its life, the middle toward the end?
It's at the end, it's actually currently in the process of a replacement.
Correct, it's slated for replacement this coming year, and we're working with ITA on that.
Any questions?
On the work comp, I know there's an outside vendor for work comp?
Yes.
And I forget the name.
QLD.
QLD. So are we doing duplicate efforts, or how does that work? We're doing work comp, they're doing work comp? There's a work comp review?
Well, QLD is, is the vendor that, that maintains and, and actually hosts the system, but there is a great deal of work that's done in-house for workers' comp.
We're not duplicating efforts?
They do not process claims.
It's not duplicating, it's not.
They're, they're not processing claims, they're doing data maintenance and they're hosting the system off-site.
Okay, and then processing claims, that's another outside vendor?
No, processing claims is, well, there are a couple of outside vendors.
We have a third-party vendor processing the sworn claims, that is Tristar.
Tristar, right, Tristar.
And then we do civilian claims, we process those in our department.
Those are all internal?
Correct.
Okay, so Tristar just does the outside?
Tristar does the sworn claims.
Police and fire?
Correct.
Okay, and then the computer systems are integrated between their system and our system?
Tristar utilizes links, because we use links, and that's part of the contract requirement.
Okay, right. Very good. And this layoff process has got to be complicated, is because of the-
Yeah.
-when someone loses their position, there's the seniority and they revert to something else, and how it cascades down?
Right.
Hopefully, we don't have to do it, but it's not looking very good. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, good to see you.
Same here.
Tell your brother hello, tell your brother, Tony, hello.
Thank you.
Anne Mary.
So who's next?
Rec and Parks.
Huh? He's here now? He now showed up.
Ready.
I'm not leaving you because I don't like John Muckery, but I've got another committee I have to go to.
Okay.
But it doesn't mean you like him.
I do like John Muckery.
Okay, for the record, he likes John Muckery.
Okay, Noel Williams, Department of Recreation and Parks, Finance Division. I brought with me Lynn Vo, our Senior Systems Analyst Two, and Pam Arona, one of our Systems Analysts. We have had in the past seventeen, approximately seventeen people, full-time people, working on systems in our Systems Section, which is part of our Finance Division. We lost one person to promotion to DWP, who was our Director of Systems, and one Systems Analyst on our, will it be accepting or has actually just accepted, retirement. And he, that was our help desk support, the one support.
That's under Systems Administrative Services?
Uh, yes.
So one to ERIP and one-
To promotion, which I think is not reflected there. So currently have fifteen full-time staff. Just a little bit about the department, we have right now approximately twenty-eight hundred computers, one hundred what they call T-one sites and two hundred and forty RLAN or DSL sites. Those are primarily recreation-type facilities, could also be maintenance types facilities. We have about seventeen hundred full-time employees, and as you all know, we are twenty-four-seven if necessary for emergency operations. Primarily, we do work seven days a week, I won't say twenty, twenty-four hours, but we have extended hours depending upon the operational needs. Most of our systems, some of our staff time does, we do use many citywide systems such as the Personnel System, D-Time, Financial Management System, and always, there's always some court group-wise, which will now become Gmail. There's always some staff time required within the department, just because as large as we are and as geographically diverse as we are, just to coordinate when we implement new things like Gmail or migrate group-wise when we used to handle it ourselves to ITA. One thing I think we would be supportive of, because we lost our retirement, to retirement, and I've heard it said before, and I think it's a good candidate, possible consolidation of help desk. We will be moving that way anyway, because we're encouraging people to start calling ITA, and then the work that needs to be done in-house, we would assign it back to some technical personnel, and if possible, the other work could be assigned to ITA, however we end up trying to set that up.
How many public accessible facilities do you have, roughly?
Uh, well, you have all the recreation centers, one eighty, you know, you have pools, which may not have a necessarily, year-round, people may have a pool, but not necessarily a pool in every bill, or a computer in every building, but recreational sites, public facilities, like four hundred, give or take, you know. Parks are, you know, just quite a large diversity in of our thing. Many of our-
Standing four hundred and eighty square miles.
Yeah, exactly, seventeen thousand acres. We do have many proprietary, we would consider proprietary systems that have been developed in-house, you know, like our R-line registration where people can go, I believe twenty-four-seven to sign up for classes, yeah, the online registration where they can look at a recreation center's classes that they're offering and sign up for them online. And sign up for them, as opposed to the old way of putting a card up, and when the cards are gone, that's how many people can be in it. We do have, we're working on a permitting, which would allow our facilities, and we do quite a bit of permitting, and we have an existing permitting system-
Correct.
-to, for instance, those folks who have soccer, they can permit through, through the soccer, the fields, through the soccer, and pay a fee and hold their, their games there. We have something they call the MRP Portal, where we actually, it's on, partial automation or quite a significant automation on our accounting of collecting of fees and accounting for fees that are paid for various classes. Our golf is also, we have a reservation office, but we also have our point-of-sale system, where if you're green, so you go and you pay your, your greens fees there, and we collect and account and do our golf accounting. That is also twenty-four-seven on the reservations, as well as tennis is also on there. Talked about our help desk a little bit. We do have one person who supports web services for our entire department and all our webpage, which includes each facility as a webpage.
Correct.
Right, and we have, Lynn handles some of our applications, which are, we have a very detailed cost accounting tracking system right down to the rec center, and we do use this, we process a lot of grants accounting for like Prop 12, hopefully, in the future, Prop 84. We have our Quimby tracking system, which tracks all the money that's been collected and appropriated, and as it's approved, working in conjunction with council districts, all the money will be divided up by each facility, and then it also collects all the expenditures for auditing purposes. We do have, Lynn also is responsible for our position control system in our, internally in our Personnel Department, as well as several other systems. Any questions? Anything I can-
No, as you're well aware, the working groups are gonna be going through a lot of the details, there's gonna be opportunities for people to explain where consolidation may or may not make sense and to defend and propose ideas. Okay?
No, and, and the Thursday, I didn't see our name on that group, so I wasn't sure if we were invited or not. I brought the-
Please come.
Okay. That's fine, I just didn't see our name, so I didn't know if it was limited to-
Come one, come all.
To a certain size or not, because I, I didn't actually get it, I got referred to me, but-
I think the department that accidentally doesn't show up might be completely consolidated.
Just eliminated, right. So anyway, we currently have fifteen people. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our last department for today, the Zoo.
Good afternoon, May Kwan with the Zoo Department, and I have with me Jesus Sartis, our Senior Systems Analyst for the department. The Zoo is a unique operation with systems primarily related to revenue generation with our ticket sales operations and management of the Zoo's animal collection, and also currently development of the IT infrastructure associated with our ongoing capital program. Some of the challenges that we face are managing systems within an aging infrastructure, infrastructure from nineteen sixty-six, so a lot of repair issues and downtime. And then also, we're moving forward with implementation of an online ticket sales system, so eventually we'll, that'll make that operation a twenty-four-seven component. In regards to ERIP, we have two full-time system staff, we haven't been affected by ERIP with them, but indirectly with our accounting staff, we've lost over fifty percent staff through ERIP and transfers, so-
Wow.
-indirectly with our fiscal systems management and reporting, that's been a big impact.
Well, that's, it's kind of interesting, because, well, first of all, if your IT staff were to lose one to ERIP, that's fifty percent.
Right.
So, either way, it's a big hit.
Yeah, we originally had seven full-time staff in our accounting section, and we will be down to three after April.
But also, I mean, that's, that's a pretty heavy exodus, but, I mean, there is, beyond conjecture, it's been mentioned by the mayor's office that they're considering proposing privatizing the zoo or something like that, so I'm sure that that's affecting people's-
Right.
-having to look at, I may enjoy my job here, what have you, but if I want to stay working for the city, maybe this is the opportunity for me to explore moving over to somewhere else, and obviously, if they explored it, looks like some people actually found it-
Right, that definitely was part of the decision for some of those staff in accounting.
So you went from seven IT to two?
No, we, the IT is two, the seven is accounting staff. But so, so those fiscal systems-
How long have you been at I, to IT people? The reason why I asked that question, because it's kind of awkward, two's kind of small.
For, I've been there fifteen years total, for about, I would say thirteen of those, it was just myself and a half-timer, and then we hired somebody about two or three years ago, full-time Systems Analyst. So for the last two or three years, we've been, it's been two of us.
I mean, but you got a hundred and fifty computer users zoo-wide, a hundred and thirty are network-connected, I mean, still, just seems kind of, I mean, don't get me wrong, I'm not criticizing you, I'm just wondering how you operate with two people.
Very talented staff.
No, this, I think we found the model. I think we found the model, two people per every hundred and thirty monitors.
Well, it's, it's been incremental, I mean, it started with thirty-eight users at the beginning, and it has gone all the way to have about a hundred and sixty, and now it's coming down with people leaving, but-
But still, I mean, those are a lot of moving parts, that's, someone could be calling you for support because they just don't know where to start, and some of them are obviously legitimate, you know, if that particular unit, that hardware unit is having a problem, there's a call right there, I mean, I just, I just find it kind of interesting that, but good, that you're able to be that efficient and still, hopefully, you're functioning. You know, you could have two people and say, well, half of our units are out at any given time, but since we don't get the support, we just deal with it, right? That's not good either, but my point is, so right now, it appears to be manageable with, with the two people you have?
Yes.
Okay, and I would never say that it would be ideal, it doesn't sound ideal to me, but it's manageable.
Because with the consolidation of group-wise, about two years ago, it helped a little bit, to just do the end-user support and not the actual system, which helped, and I was acquired by ITA, so with the Gmail, it's kind of the same thing, we're gonna be doing end-user support, but yet, we're not really dealing with the back end of it, and that helped. So at this point, I think we're, we're okay with two people. I know that as time goes by, you know, more systems and more systems are added and, and more requirements as far as, you know, manual processes that turn into automated processes, and that's how this has grown to this level. Started small, and now it's, it's bigger, but I think it's still manageable, and we'll do the best we can.
Yeah, you know, they might automate feeding, where the animal actually says, I want to eat, so push a button and-
One area that we're looking at is maybe-
What's that?
Video, video.
Yeah, video, I mean, a lot of monitoring, I mean, we're, we've been talking about how the zoo hasn't upgraded its, rather than implemented a full system of, of a fire system at the zoo, obviously, there would be some automation there, certainly signal messaging and things of that nature, even if it's not two-way integrated, it's at least one way. That would be adding responsibilities too. Anything else?
As far as what we might want to consolidate, I think we're down, we use ITA for a lot of the systems, and they're already centralized. The systems that are listed here are pretty much proprietary, and they, they have to stay at the zoo, because that's, that's, they're just for the zoo.
Specialized.
Yes, so I think as far as that, I think we're pretty much down to where it's supposed to be as far as centralization and all that.
Cool, maybe this is the model. Last one today. Well, it is Z, so, you're the last one today. Okay, thank you very much, thank you. All right, with that, do we have anybody here who's here for public comment on item number one? Anybody here from the public who'd like to make comment on item number one? I do not have any public comment cards before me, I do not see anybody coming forward, so public comment on item one is closed. With that, we'll continue this item to next week, hopefully, next week, we will be hearing the final presentations on this item from the departments. Where are you guys from?
We're from a little department that is not on the radar, we're the interested vendor community, so.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah, no, you guys are not little. Well, you're part of the public today. Okay, so with that, we'll move this, continue this item to next week, and we open it now for general public comment. You guys here to make any general public comment?
Just observing.
Just observing quietly. S and P. Okay, general public comment, anybody here for general public comment? Seeing and hearing no one come forward, general public comment is not closed, this committee's now adjourned.